I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Today's date is August the 20th, 5:50 PM. Joining, would you call the real place?
Commissioner Art.
Here.
Commissioner Eel.
Here.
Commissioner Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Vogel's here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any changes to the agenda today? Agree none, we'll move into the public request portion of our meeting. The public request portion for those of you who are an opportunity for members of the public to address the Commissioner's issues of concern to them. And if you would approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. And just a reminder, we do have a 6:00 PM meeting to discuss the golf course issue, which is welcome to say what others on the line here cannot be at this liberty. And the floor is now open.
Hello, Robert DuKite, 5351 of West 30 Terrace. Thank you again for all your cooperation in the past with acquiring the former Ocean Breeze, now local Nashville Golf Course. I sent out something to each one of you, and I think that one of the things that everybody can agree upon, I think, is that we would like to see professionals decide the golf course structure, especially eighteen versus twenty-seven. And the Beach Park District has spent thousands of dollars on a consultant's report by National Golf Foundation. And as I pointed out in the last meeting, that report recommended twenty-seven holes. As a matter of fact, in this report, there's also on page fifteen, an estimated cost of the twenty-seven holes of one million, sorry, equally one hundred thousand. And for the total renovation of the golf course, fourteen million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand. Again, that's from the feasibility study by the National Golf Foundation. Right behind that, there's a fact sheet on Osprey Point. Osprey was opened several years ago, and their cost is fourteen million dollars. Osprey is, of course, a very profitable and very desirable format. A lot of people have said there's not enough room for twenty-seven holes, which has been historically the layout. I don't believe they have to keep the exact same layout. I believe you can certainly improve on the quality. But on the first page of this, I put out the length of Osprey versus the length of Ocean Breeze with the three nine holes. And the average length of Ocean Breeze, the former Ocean Breeze layout, was sixty-eight hundred yards. The average length at Osprey is sixty-seven hundred yards. So we actually have a slightly longer, very comparable length of golf course. The only primary difference, of course, is the length of the driving range. And if we think that we want to make the golf course for the top five percent of the golfers out there, then yes, we need a three hundred and fifty or four hundred yard driving range. If you want to have a golf course for the ninety-five percent who can't hit it three hundred, three hundred and fifty yards, then you would want to have a driving range that is two hundred to two hundred and fifty yards. I know myself, I don't hit three hundred yards.
Come on, Robert.
My head and tap is going up, but in all seriousness, though, I think that the details bear out the consideration of a twenty-seven hole golf course. And without a doubt, I would like to see some changes to the golf course, raise the tee boxes, raise the greens, put some more water features in there, use that dirt for mounding to separate fairways and things like that, that would certainly improve the character of the golf course. And hopefully have it compete with Osprey successfully from a financial and a number of players basis. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Say none, then we'll close this portion of the meeting. Commissioners, in your packet are the minutes of the regular meeting held August the sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Craig.
One discussion.
Yeah, one discussion. The first item that presented public requests for the district was also that district staff will investigate the matter and provide a solution. I thought we were gonna, well, we're gonna investigate it, but it isn't our responsibility for a solution. It's just a semantic words. We can leave it, but I'm saying...
Well, I thought we were going to investigate a solution, whether it's their solution or our solution.
I'm with you. I'm with you. It's not our job, the district decided.
No, they came to us asking for us to do something. And I know that since we're already working on their project, maybe it was something that physically we could fold into our contract. It could go anywhere, Craig.
I'm with you.
Until we hear...
I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Agree none, all those in favor of the minutes at nine? I propose like sign, passion, and answer. And then we had a special meeting on the seventh of August at, was that 5:50? I guess it was. And the minutes are in the, in your packet also, Commissioners, for your review and comments and approval.
Mr. Craig.
Second. Any discussion? Agree none, all those in favor say aye. Approve like sign, passion, and answer. The first order of business is a budget discussion. And before you get into our, I would just make one request. If we're looking at any budgets, handouts, if they're different than the one we've had before, can we have a date on them so that we can distinguish between? And what we have is getting a little confusion, confusing for me. And the floor is, I didn't see it on that one, but that's just on the supplement, but on the actual budget itself, we're looking at this. Art, you're the...
The issue of budget on this agenda is in anticipation of our first public hearing as required by the state TRIM legislation, which will be held on September 4th.
October 6th. Does anybody know for, does what you're saying, the first going to be...
Six. I better put it in my tab. All right. Well, that's anyway, that's why we're talking about the budget. At that evening, whatever day it may be, we will be presenting a budget which under the TRIM legislation will be explained in detail to the public who may be present. And after adoption of the budget, we will talk about the military associated with the upcoming year. Customarily, we have the proposed budget on a form board, but this year we can put it up on our, on our wait screen. So this will be, we want to have something established between now and the sixth to put up so that when the public comes, we can accommodate the requirement that we discuss a budget, a necessary budget that has to be adopted before we go to our final public hearing and adopt our final military. So now is the time to start talking about individual items of the budget that you would like to see removed, that you would like to see added, or that you wish to have adjusted in any fashion. So that's why budget is on the agenda. And Merv is here, he has done for us a five-year projection of the budget.
Yeah, if you have a question, I'd be glad to go over anything with you, number wise. I do, there was something that did bring to attention, we received some more information from the city on buckplop on Friday. So we do have a few changes in some numbers, but they're not reflected in what you have, of course, and they will be reflected on the actual budget document that we proposed for the September 6th hearing. But in your package, you receive on page nine of your packet, this is the district's proposed budget for two thousand and nineteen year, year, year starting October the first two thousand and nineteen to ending September 30th, two thousand and nineteen. It includes the military that you currently have, which will produce property taxes that's twenty four million and five hundred thousand. We do have all the city expenses that they've given to us so far. And we've got the capital projects that the city has given to us, and we have our own capital projects. And next year, our capital projects, the main project that we have is the Hatch Creek Park Field construction project. We do this field, it's three point seven million dollars. We've got five hundred thousand dollars for architectural fees. That's the two major projects for next year, I guess. We have not, that does not include any funding currently for the construction of the golf course. We, of course, have, you don't have, that's the budget, which we will have hopefully in the next three or four months, next three or four, hopefully ninety days, I guess. We'll have that information available. So like you know what the city gave us at five o'clock on Friday, we did receive some good news that they reduced the operations at about eighty-three thousand dollars from the seventy-four or five, they dropped out of about eighty-five thousand dollars. And I do want to pass this, because I think it's important for the Commission to see this. Art, now talk about this this afternoon, pass this around. They did, they did give us a new CIP schedule where the two thousand and nineteen year didn't have changed much, but they did move the projects according to the forward, which we, Art, kind of sort of confused on, the Hatch Creek Park Phase Two. Originally, when they submitted it to us in June of this year, they anticipated that they would start engineering in the year, next year, twenty year, due to the year ending in two thousand and twenty. But now what they have done is moved that project up until next year for the design, and then they show the construction costs, which the construction costs on that project are estimated at not many dollars. So that just sort of breaks the back. So I think the Commissioners need to know, try to find out why they moved that project up, and perhaps it can be moved back out again, because, and that's just a large, large construction project of the district.
Well, we had a joint meeting, I pointed that out, that we don't have a master and local agreement. We had sent something over there for, I guess, several years ago to get their approval at once, same time we can send over a beach renovation agreement. And so seeing that in the budget, it kind of surprised me, and Leaf was surprised it was in there too. And I never got an answer to one.
They kept that as a Friday afternoon at five o'clock when we received this new page. They had moved it forward a year, which just, you know, really surprised me. So I think you did have that discussion, Commissioners.
That's, that's just nitty, but I don't know where the...
I don't know where the funding came from. No, I just, I think we're covered well for next year. I think, you know, I think we have sufficient funds to cover our operations. We knew that the construction was, you know, we knew we were gonna have to have additional source of revenue, whether it's bar funds or what have you for the construction of the golf course. And I don't have any revenues for the golf course, I don't have any operating expenses yet. As you've heard, you know, I guess Osprey covered substantial debt services from their operational revenue, so. But if you have other questions, I'd be glad. There was a five-year forecasting here. I did it two ways, I did one ways with just your projects going forward, and the second goes on the show, if you put the city projects that they forecast. But that Spanish River Park or Hatch Creek Park was not put in there. And I put that in the second year for design and the third year for construction, and it gave you a negative balance at that time, so next year what do you even do? But you, we used a lot of funds to purchase the golf course, and some of the, we have funds budgeted in the current year for the demolition, and perhaps all the end purchase during the golf course. So we're covered on that, I've got that in the forecast for this year.
Art, who is that they put this in?
The, we got, I got an email, our daily email Friday afternoon from the Recreation Director and the Budget Office and the Finance Department, which I assume, you know, in direction from the same National Office.
Did they give a rationale for as to why?
They're not giving me to one, I was asked to receive one and a lot.
Right request. Any request? Not, okay.
I think, you know, I think it's important that the Commission take a stand, if, you know, we want to phase this out some more years, and I think we need to let them know that, so.
Yeah, the worst-case scenario, well, there are worst cases. Would we be able to split this into two years, two half?
I would think, I think the original project, Art, I think we split over several years, so obviously we could do that with this. Your numbers tick off, you know, with the, the value numbers pick up, you see from the revenue call in the future years. So, you know, but we take a lot of those cash reserves that we have, we use this for golf course.
Yeah, but that's my concern, is that we're already at the limit, at the lower limit with our cash reserves. I really wouldn't be comfortable going any further, and this is a big chunk of money, and we have to, we really, we'd have to raise, raise the military, which I don't want to do either. Well, here's the bottom line, because we've been asking about this for several years now, and now it's election time. This has been an issue now, so does bank and our budget. Come on. First of all, I'm not going to vote for anything to fund any design until I know that we're gonna have a contract to do this project. And right now, until we get that master and local agreement, this is going nowhere. And so that's, and that's gonna, that's the bottom line, I suppose. So, I mean, that's one area that I had already said was gonna be scrubbed for my recommendation, along with a couple other things I got that I, you know, deal to, the floor. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would go along with that. And I'm not a fan of five o'clock policy, and that's basically what this is.
Well, it's really kind of awkward when I ask that question, and Leaf had this shot look on his face while I know that was in there, at a joint meeting, if you recall that, I mean, it was like, I didn't see that.
I think that's, it warrants a whole nother joint meeting, because my takeaway from the joint meeting was, they have nothing budgeted for redevelopment of the area over there. They've got nothing budgeted for a lot of things, except for whenever they're gonna spend the sixty-five million for on Ocean, the sale of the golf course, which no one is saying what they're spending it on. So everyone's asking, well, so why can't they spend some money on this golf course for the area? The bottom line is, the community needs to have a lot of redevelopment work, and some of it will have to be re-sparing things, including what we have budgeted for the CRA. And that's not clear to me. I mean, I thought we left it with, remember when I spoke briefly about it, I thought it was all going away after the last payment in December, but apparently it's not. I think friends at the law firm are supposed to look at something, regardless of the outcome of that part, and I know we have a tight timeframe, I think it's a valuable thing to talk about with the city council to say, maybe that should just kind of end on its own, so that we can all focus our efforts where it needs to be spent.
Yeah, so I, I think, as you said, that, we have another meeting at six, so we would probably need to get this discussion done until we get on the other agendas. But I think that my recommendation would be, that that should not be in our budget for, you know, for two thousand and nineteen, for this community.
And then we, from the Commissioners, get some direction, Mr. Buck, you referred to abstracting from page nine, and...
Page ten, what's the...
Well, that's correct.
Page nine is page ten.
Well, can I give you some, some thoughts, and you can strike it down when I can handle the word, Mr. Craig. Just, my perspective looking at the budget is it's gonna be two thousand and nineteen in a very thin, thin budget. And so if you can take things out, you're better off. I realize maybe it's better to budget it and not have to amend it later, but I assume that all the operating expenses are gonna be as they are. I'm a little surprised that from us, Merv, to the city, that their spend on whoever it was, they went from fifteen million to sixteen million to seventeen and a half million. That's a huge increase on the operating budget. We haven't talked about that, and you said it's okay. And I don't think it's okay.
I believe that includes some new positions to fund the soccer club.
A hot, one and a half million dollars, but that, that was, that was a discussion of less than a hundred thousand dollars. I just don't see that operating budget being totally acceptable without further discussion.
Well, didn't they say, like, insurance costs have not went up like forty percent or something for them?
I think that's what he was saying, the work comp, the group health insurance went up, but, you know, the work comp rates actually went down, so, I mean, if they rolled up, the work comp premiums will be up.
He didn't just, it might, you're right, and I'm okay with it, I'm not saying no increase, I'm just saying a million and a half increase on a fifteen million dollar, you know, prior year's base is a lot. Actually, a sixteen million, they still haven't explained what happened the past year. So we need to have some discussion around that.
Well, you know, I did order the books with the background on it for everybody to take over that, Craig, which all the details that we were lacking in our first discussion. So aren't you at your finger?
The, as we talked about before, the operating and maintenance aspect of the city's budget historically is always lower than what is requested. And in some areas, it's been as much as twenty percent. You've just got a bill from the city, and for most recent month, it was churning the way up to. And when you look at that document, you can see the actual expenditures to date versus the budgeted expenditures to date, and see that they are less on every single category at every single park. So we always, we never reach that operating number, but we always budget it. I'm not as worried about the operation and maintenance, because I don't want to get into an argument with the city as to whether cutting back the operation and maintenance cuts back negatively on the quality of the product that we present to the public.
So we can say that seventeen point four million is...
Less eighty-four thousand. Less eighty-four thousand.
Less eighty-four thousand. It's gonna be lower, but we're gonna go with the number as it is.
But I think we need to look at capital expenses of five hundred and sixty-five million, and we need to drop that to a bottom line reserve, where each capital expense is, as we've done in the, in the past, brought to us by a separate request, and then either approved or disapproved. That always is complicated and has been in the future by the fact that we're used to paying things when we get a bill, and the city likes to have the money before they place the order to buy something.
We pay after the, they make the payment. And of course, they record the contract.
So I'd like to see that down on a separate line, out of the reserves, as we did last year, and call it city capital reserves, and hope that there's some of that money that will not be spent. And then take something such as any items which we know cannot possibly be done in the upcoming year, such as Phase Two at the moment, there's not much sense in paying for a maintenance building if we have nothing to maintain. And so maybe we should be looking at a design, or maybe we shouldn't be looking at a design until we have a commitment that it's going to be done. So striking items like that may be helpful. And we can just go through it and look at the ones that we don't think we'll need for the upcoming year, and take them out of the budget that we're gonna present to the public. And as long as we have the appropriate reserves in the bottom line, our operating reserves are always at two million. We've never had to touch that operating reserve item at all in the past. We can have the nature of our Schmiede space, and just have our own capital reserve item, and we can have a city capital reserve item in the bottom, without specification of what particularly those items are designed for.
So you're suggesting, Art, that we drop to the five point six million to the capital reserves without, without striking any of the items that I feel...
No, if you think there's an item in there that needs to come out, and if it's two million dollars, then we drop the reserve to three million, six, sixty-five.
Well, I'm just looking at the proposal there, you've got the maintenance facility which you mentioned, the Spanish River Maintenance Facility, which hasn't been mentioned. And there's also some lighting over at Spanish River, I brought that issue up. Those things right there, I'm not sure are, you know, necessary that we do these. Building a new maintenance facility, I know that's been on the subject for some time over at Spanish River, but, you know, as Craig said, this is a lean year, and if we're, if we're going to cut back some things, it might be a couple of projects to consider.
I think so, and if you did cut them back, and you prepared a budget without them, and it became critical that we were, it was necessary for some reason to add them back in by way through the year, then you could look at the status of the operation and maintenance expenditures versus the budget, and you may find the money in that differential, say, in February of next year.
And we've done that before, we've done that before, so that's not unusual thing to do.
So if we could just give Merv a list of things that we don't want in there, he could give us another, other page.
The first project in the Boone's crossover, Ward Rockview, already authorized that, the million ninety-three project, the first one. So that will actually, we know that there, I think, we discussed this afternoon, that that project probably will not start until the end of September, so we will, we will actually make those payments next year. We know that project, you approved it already, so we know, you know, we will fund that up on the top part, and that when we do the budget and the elements, we will, the next one is the pump replacement, which has been over the summer years, so that's the major one.
And the one thing about the pump replacement, I think we owe it to the city to rely upon the numbers, despite the fact that I'm a little skeptical about their accuracy. Let's just keep them where they are. It is probably the most important capital project that we're gonna see in the upcoming four years.
Well, to the question, Commissioners, do you want to eliminate some of those items or drop the five point six million to capital reserve that would require an individual request?
Well, I do as long as we are complete in our communications with the city to let them know that we're not necessarily saying no to the project, but we're just going to take the way from the sea. It's always a problem at budget time, because you're budgeting for things that may happen eight or nine months from now. And knowing how things have worked in the past, a lot of things never occur at the eight or nine month time, we're carrying it to the following year.
I mean, like, this, we anticipated, when we did the budget last year, that we would spend our five million dollars in city capital projects, whereas of it now, it's still a million, it was, so those projects, you know, didn't happen, so, or now that the place that they thought they would be doing the year, so.
Great. So on the capitals of the city, I mean, most of these things are the Boone crossover, the pump, the master plan, those are all things that we, we're being approved. So the only things that are up for early discussion, and those things are really small, is everything at Spanish River. And so I guess I would kind of take the whole Spanish River thing, those three, four items, and put them down in that, as art to just city capital at the bottom, and tie it to the master and to local agreement, so we can get that out of the way when we get that all resolved.
You're talking the Hornway or Spanish River?
The Hornway, I'm sorry, the Hornway. Yeah, just the Hornway. Spanish River is landing at the beach, that needs to be addressed.
Did you also have a maintenance facility?
I've parked that, that's, that's a big expense, 'cause you're... I've parked that, that's, that's a big expense, 'cause you're, I mean, look...
Oh, designing for the next year.
It's still, there's so many things going on, even designing a maintenance facility at Spanish River, the beach from, I mean, that they have, so, we should focus on the one they don't have.
So, let me, let's see if I can repeat that, what you were suggesting, Craig, is that we've already approved the Doom Crossover, the pump replacement, and the GL, they've done a level master plan. Have that as a line item, everything else dropped down to capital reserve.
Yeah.
What's your thoughts, Steve and Craig?
Yeah, actually, that, that didn't have to do with capital, capital expenditure.
Well, let's finish that up before we jump horses. Art, do you follow some of that?
I can be over, make a note.
You got, everybody agree, agreeable to doing that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You know, I, I still think there's a couple of those items there that are gonna come off, like the two hundred thousand dollars sign for Duomo, we're not gonna probably do that because unless we have a discussion to come to agreeing on it in my head later. Okay, so, if that's agreeable, Mur, that's what we'll do. And Steve, you had some other questions?
Yeah, just looking here at operations and maintenance, and it seems like we're actually spending at least as much, at least over the last couple of years, we're spending at least as much as was budgeted. And it occurs to me that there are vacancies that, that go unfilled. Now, I don't know if there are maintenance issues that take up that money, but this year, we're looking at sixteen million seventy-five, if a budget, sixteen million seventy-five and change spent.
That's just, we just, that's...
That's projected.
Project, and that's just an estimate.
Yeah.
And I've told you before this, that you said, like, September thirtieth closing, that's very hard to project that.
Yeah.
What we do, remember last year, on the revenue side, if you go to the revenue side, that Long Island's called Resources Forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's three percent of the city's operating budget. So, we're saying they're not gonna send three percent. And we had this tree that we showed last year, that showed that. So, we use that as a revenue wire to come back and say, we're taking advantage of that to fund projects, basically. So, that becomes a revenue wire, those unspent dollars, basically.
Yeah. Well, what I'm seeing here, we're already, what, this is the end of August, we're already eleven twelfths of the way into the year, and so, we shouldn't have some kind of handle on what O N M is gonna be.
You're gonna bill her today, I think, for four hundred thousand, last month you had a bill, I think, for a million five.
And that's because you get billings based on quarters, on parks and bill on a quarterly basis rather than monthly basis.
Yeah.
But the thing to do is, it's very simple, is you look at expenses year to date, and you look at budget year to date, and you'll always see that the expenses are less than the budget year to date.
And I'm looking at, again, it's a projection, and I understand that, but...
It's, it's just a projection, on those, I just go, what we have budgeted.
Right.
It's not, the other ones I can have a feel on, but I don't have a good feel on.
Um, I, I understand what you're saying, but getting back to a point that Craig made before, the numbers keep going up. And even though what you're saying is that we don't make those numbers average, but...
Right.
Nevertheless, the numbers are still going up.
Well, they go up for a couple of reasons, because the city wants the extra money, it's a nice buffer to have. We are trying to maintain quality of our facilities. And the administrative and technical is measured by the operation and maintenance. It's a factor in the computation of the administration and technical. So, the higher that number...
The higher the administration and technical.
They do actually work that out in here, and they actually...
That's always true, though.
Yeah, they truly do, but it's always a little bit less, but that's the law when you do it.
Yeah, I remember one year it was more. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I, I would like the city to tighten that up, you know, we have, I don't know how many positions remain open over the course of the year that we budget for, but I'd like to see more realistic projections on the part of the city. I think that would help tighten that number up.
Their report is available, the Grand, Art, they give that report for the vacant positions.
Yeah.
That's available in the HR department.
Yeah, the difficulty is trying to determine the retirements that are gonna occur and the ability to fill those and so forth. So, obviously, the more facilities you have, the more people you're going to...
And they also did say that once they get, like, something written or something approved in terms of an opening, like, once you get rid of it, it's really hard to get it back.
No, I, I understand that, but that's a budgeting philosophy that maybe they can change.
I just wondered how much that actually is gonna...
I don't know, it could be a hundred thousand, it could be fifteen, it could be a million.
It has worked for forty years. It, it is a program, it's not exact, it can never be exact. There's no way that we can ever create this budget to the pain of what is required.
You're saying that.
Commissioners, I, I think we've talked about this before and came to the conclusion to go with that number, and, and in the interest of getting to our next meeting, I think we should stick to that philosophy, as Art said, you're not gonna be able to get anything certain. We know it's higher, we know there's some causes for that with increased personnel, with health insurance and work comp.
And just, let me throw one other thing to think about. On January one, hopefully, right around that time, we're gonna be bidding the artificial fields at Patchery Park. So, for the balance of the fiscal year during two thousand and nineteen, we won't have the same amount of operating expense that we normally incur. We've been promised that our operating expenses with artificial will go down as compared to natural grass.
I'll withhold comments on that.
We'll see that.
We'll see, without you saying what, what's been promised.
Right. And any other questions, Mr. Chair?
Are we obligated to the five hundred thousand for the golf tournament?
We're not obligated, it is a discretionary item with you, such as the Dog Park and reimbursement at Red Reef Golf Course. I think you have to weigh in whether it will provide you a benefit with the new facility that you're planning to open. I understand there will be some announcements coming out, probably in October, November now, about sponsors. I think it was a very good public relations activity for the district last year, but it's a lot of money. And it's a very difficult thing to say that that expenditure will come back to us in the following year if we are fortunate enough to have the tournament come to our golf course.
It just seems like it's a lot of money when we've got it, kind of taken it back. It's my fun, I mean, that was probably the most fun I've had in a long time.
Well, I think the people recognize the contribution of the district, although I've heard that there is concern at City Hall about the district's participation, that the event becomes a district-sponsored event rather than a city-sponsored event.
Well, I thought it's meant to be a tournament that's a private sponsor, but we did it for one year, we went in with the city to do it for one year.
Well, the city does it every year.
They put in five hundred thousand dollars every year.
They put in cost of police fire and money when requested.
I would not put it in, I think Mr. Schmidt probably has it under control in terms of sponsorship, hopefully. I think it's a lot of money for us to put in again.
There's no doubt about it, you may wanna cut it and add, and keep something in to show your desire to participate, to be involved in the sport as...
Can we find out from, if there's any sponsors?
By other resources.
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, last year, we didn't have our budget, then we had an appeal with the best tenant to help out, so, so if we take that out of our budget and say, you know, we're not interested, and somebody makes an appeal, and, you know, it's either this or the tournament goes away, let's, let's take it out.
Or you keep it in and take it out in a scheduled time. But I know that there are, there are true sponsors.
Yeah, I'd rather take it out and have an explanation as to why we should do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Given, given our, our political constraints we have, I think that would be a prudent fiscal decision to do it.
Take it out.
Take it out, yeah. Do you have one other question on Maestro Bart, you have forty thousand in there for that, is that a design fee, or do you remember Art's, or...
That's the restaurant.
Is that the, the cost of the restrooms?
The design of the restaurant.
The restrooms are working, they're on one of the tripers.
You know, I mean, here's what I'm concerned about, in looking at forward, you've got two capital expenses, one to four hundred thousand, one to four forty-five, and we, we went into this disagreeing to pay the maintenance costs, so we had access to the district constituents to go in as, as citizens of the city and not to pay any additional tax. So, I'm concerned, looking forward, that it's be, be recognized that, you know, we're not obligated just because we agreed to do the maintenance, let's don't warp that into fact that we're gonna start building capital items over there.
Well, the, the construction of Phase Two at Duomo included great deal of work.
Correct. Correct. And that was the whole nexus that we had in getting involved with it, that we thought that we would be building Phase Two, putting in restaurants over there, and then connecting the dog park with sort of the park, and that hasn't happened. But I don't have a problem keeping the forty thousand in there, but I, I just wanted to let the Commissioners know that looking forward to these two capital items, I don't feel like we're obligated to those, just pointing out. Craig?
Just, you know, one other thing, I think I agree with all the comments that I made, but to be mindful of what we are missing is that with that service on the off course, what we agreed, we already signed up for was one point six million there. That is for nineteen million dollars of debt for fifteen years. So, and that was at a very low interest rate, just earlier this year. So, keep in mind that, you know, as we approach the next phase of this whole thing, if you're talking about another nineteen million, but I think we were talking fifteen million, but let's say it's nineteen, you're basically doubling that. And so, that, right, right there, another one point six million on this project, really is very difficult. So, we have to be mindful of those capital projects. And the other aspect of, and I realize we haven't counted the revenue that we would get, but you have to spend the money before you get the revenue. And you sign up for the debt service before you get the revenue. So, we don't know what we're gonna get on that revenue side. So, it goes back to the theme that we've all talked about, of whatever the viability of the golf course is, it has to be economically viable. And the more expensive the golf course was, the more challenging it becomes for us to have rounds of golf times a resident rate that will pay this thing. So, as we get to our next meeting, it kind of sets it all up for, what are we really gonna do with this whole two hundred acres that will work forever?
We're still waiting on the answer to your question from the joint meeting.
The joint meeting, it was Eric's question.
Was it Eric's question?
Yeah.
The, the answer has been given, you just haven't heard it.
Oh, yeah, we, we saw that.
The other aspect, I guess, the one thing that is missing in the budget that I, I really would like us to consider, and maybe we do it as an amendment later at some point in time, is that for the district, many years we benefited from having Ocean Strand, and I think Ocean Strand is a valuable piece of property, and it's something that we, last year this time, residents came in, we talked about, I think everyone expected and thought that the aspect would be open at some point in time. We need to start thinking about planning on an opening of it, maybe in a low passive way, and you don't have to budget it here, but we should be mindful that, I think it's an easy thing for us.
I think we agreed that we could do that, it makes sense, I mean, to clean the place up. I don't know what usage we have for it, unless we...
We've had three plans presented, or we can accept it.
Well, we had the EDSA.
Part of the water from Master here.
Yeah.
We're getting closer, some, if there's a way to fund it some way, somehow, you know, but we don't decide that now.
Commissioner, it's six o'clock, are there items on here that we definitely have to clear?
There are, if I can, yeah. Please stop in the discussion, we'll come up with a budget for it. We will take out the poker championship item. We could even drop it to the bottom line in the reserve.
No, I just, I have no reference to it, it's an idea that we're done, unless there's an, that there's an appeal.
Well, it will enlarge your, your reserves.
Correct. Art, as far as the agenda of the regular business here, are there anything on here that we need to approve before we break for the meeting here?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's, maybe they're blocking it.
Yeah, there, there was that one item there for the audio visual, which was a five hundred something dollars.
Well, look, maybe before we can leave, Mike is here, you can maybe give us a little update on where we are with the demo permits for...
I'll be brief. The demolition permits went into the city August tenth, and it's making its rounds through the, the departments. We're getting comments back, we're separately working with Florida Power and Light, 'cause there are eight different meters out there, and they don't know where they all are, so they're figuring out which ones power which buildings and which facilities. We're working with the fire department and the environmental department, 'cause they wanna know which trees have to come out, but it's, it's working its way through the process, and we're diligently keeping track of it and making sure that it continues to keep working its way through.
And Mr. Chairman, with regard to the Swinburne Racket Center, that is progressing. I have my own thoughts as to when the potential move date would be. I'm estimating sometime in October before we're fully ready at the Swinburne Racket to relocate this office over there, the stuff probably will work, like, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be throwing off.
We'll be, well, so, we've always anticipated that there would be a point in time where we're gonna be able to shift staff. So, we have to shift staff out of the trailers that they're in now, that they're operating. All the swim and aquatic staff are working out of trailers, we wanna get them into the building. And we have pro shop staff that will be, will need to move into the building as well, so we can renovate the, the pro shop. We don't want them working, we don't want them servicing the customers while the place is under construction. So, Phase One, if you will, we'll be moving the staff into the building on a temporary basis. But yes, as Art said, the, the full move-in date where we're moving all of our operations and all of the meetings over there will be, you know, more likely October. But if it is on, it is on track and it's on schedule and it continues to move forward.
And as we get closer to that date, and we look at the space available at Swinburne Racket for the district, I'd like to continue to evaluate whether the district should keep their presence here at Shosey Park as well.
Art, I do think that we should do the Treasurer's Report, because on voices, if it's, Mr. Treasurer?
Yes. A request from the Commission, approval of panel invoices in total of four hundred maybe a thousand five, forty-five, and fifteen thousand. Say.
Any questions, discussion? Any questions, discussion? If there are none, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those last signs can ask you now, so. Art, I guess we should dismiss since we're after an hour, six o'clock.
I think a lot of what we hear in reports will be around the next hour.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So these are the next two, three ends when we push to the next meeting?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second, okay. All of the favors be aye. Those last signs can ask you now, so.